This couple of paragraphs, and I don't know, it's quoted as the farmer's creed. I don't know if he wrote it, or if it's something that, that he just believed in so much that this is what he put, but.
Well, and really quickly, I'd just say that Alton was an amazing cowboy poet. And he had memorized so many poems that if he was to have written something, it would have made sense. Cause he, he always had a poem at a minute's notice. Anyway, he said this. "I believe that hard work and honest sweat are the building blocks of a, of a person's character. I believe that farming, despite its hardships and disappointments, is the most honest and honorable way that a man can spend his days on earth. I believe farming nurtures the close family ties that make life rich in ways that money can't buy. I believe that my children are learning values that will last a lifetime and that can be learned in no other way. I believe farming provides education for life and that no other occupation teaches so much about birth, growth, and maturity in such a variety of ways. I believe many of the best things in life are indeed free. The splendor of a sunrise, the rapture of wide open spaces, the exhilarating sight of your land greening each spring. I believe that by my toil I am giving more to the world than I am taking from it. An honor that does not come to all men. I believe that my life will be measured ultimately by what I have done for my fellow man. And by this standard, I fear no judgment. I believe that when a man grows old and sums up his days, he should be able to stand tall and feel pride in the lives, in the life that he has lived. I believe in farming because it makes all this possible." So I've been thinking a lot about my, my roots and, and how important they are to me. But most of all, I've been thinking about this good man and what he left to each and every one of us by what he did. And if there's anybody who has made, whether he wrote it or not, I don't know. But if there's anybody who has made this creed a part of their life and lived it to the fullest extent, every single day, is this, this guy, Mr. Griffin. And I just want to publicly say thanks to him for, even though I've only known him for about 10 of my 44 years. To his family for the example that he left for me in how I might want to live my life. I won't be able to be to his funeral on Thursday, so I hope you'll cover for me, Commissioner. Cause this is a guy that deserves our respect and gratitude, so. Okay, I'm done, sorry. I told you that was gonna be a long one, Commissioners, I hope you're, good thing we don't have much other to talk about today. We do, don't we? Alright, that's the thought of the day. We'll move on to our presentations. Today, we have our presentation on a community partnership with the Utah Department of Health and the Weber County Sheriff's Office. And so we have Dr. Kay Shaw, the nursing administrator from the Sheriff's Office is here with us today. If you'll come up, Dr. Shaw, we appreciate you and present this to us.
It's Dr. Hall, H A W, just so you know.
Dr. Hall?
Yes.
Okay, well, we have a typo, I apologize.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure that the Commission and the Weber County residents were aware of a collaborative effort that we had with the Department of Health and some testing that we did in the facility in the Weber County Jail. And I'm gonna introduce Edwin Espinell, who is the HIV Counseling and Testing Coordinator, and let him do the presentation. He's already done it to our group there, the Medical Department at the jail. And I just wanted him to share some of the results with you, so that you could see we truly are making a difference in the community. Edwin?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. Hall and our program has had quite an incredible collaboration. And it's becoming well-known actually nationwide at this point. Thank you very much, okay. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, especially to highlight the coordinated event, the activities that we had with the Weber Correctional Facility. I want to thank Dr. Kay Hall for helping us achieve what we did at the correctional center. I also want to recognize that the collaboration that we had also with the local health department, and I believe La Kelsey Talbot is here representing the local health department. And I definitely do not want to miss recognition of Angelique Nash. She was our program coordinator for this event, and she was there pretty much almost every day. And so I want to recognize that, and the rest of my colleagues at the Department of Health. I just want to let you know, this comprehensive testing that happened among incarcerated in Utah, and particularly with the Weber Correctional Facility, is one of the events that we did statewide. This particular program was designed after the CDC released a request for proposals nationwide. And they wanted to look for something innovative, something new that could help us prevent HIV infections, and also STD and viral hepatitis. So at that time, in 2011, let's see, there you go. In 2011, we decided to apply for this grant. And I want you to know that the state of Utah was one out of 33 grants granted nationwide. So we were pretty glad that our proposal was accepted. This particular proposal was to go and implement comprehensive testing in all our Utah prisons, correctional settings, county jails, and different locations. So in 2011, we approached the Weber County Jail facility after we had received the funding. And in 2012, we started testing in the prison correctional settings, youth correctional settings, and different other locations in the state. By 2012, we had established already conversations with the Weber County Correctional Facility leaders. And in 2013, we decided to go ahead with the project. The project itself ran from 2012, February, no, 2014. February 2014 to December 2014. And what we did on this one was implement comprehensive HIV testing, STD, including chlamydia, gonorrhea, and viral hepatitis. During this project, we wanted to make sure that we establish a baseline. And before the project started, all individuals that were booked into the correctional facility were offered screening only upon request. If they requested the test, they will be offered the test. And a phlebotomist would actually go down and pull the individual from his particular cell and go to the infirmary and do the testing. And that was pretty much the only testing that was, that was happening at the correctional facility. During the project, the coordinated event, everyone that was booked in the facility was offered HIV testing, viral hepatitis, and STD testing for both chlamydia and gonorrhea. So what we did was something that was innovative and that was definitely something that we hadn't done in the past. And it wasn't being done in the correctional facility. The, I just want to share with you what this entails, this particular, okay. Where are we? I can't read. Can you put escape? Thank you. No, right, I'll just use this. What we used for this testing was not a phlebotomist. We actually used the latest rapid testing technology that we use statewide and is used nationwide. So for HIV and hepatitis C, we use a rapid test through a finger stick that would give us a result in 15, 20 minutes. The effectiveness and efficacy of this test is over 99%. For STD testing, we used the urine sample, which a result came after one to two weeks later. And if positive, we will contact the client. But for the rapid test, we had the result on the spot. And that was, is, and since 2002, it's been quite remarkable in helping individuals being linked to care or get treatment. Okay, escape again? Again? Right there. I apologize for this. Yes. All the testing that we did, the result is right here. Out of 12,526 individuals that were booked during this period of time in 2014, about 23% accepted testing, that is 2,800 individuals. And out of those, we had 1,055 that got tested with HIV, three of which resulted positive. We tested 1,032 individuals for hepatitis C, which has been in the news quite a bit lately. And we identified 127 individuals that were positive. And we did 811 STD tests, from which we had 79 individuals tested positive for either one of them. When we're looking at HIV testing, and as you know, the cost of treating and linking individuals to care for HIV testing for people with HIV is quite expensive. And the positivity rate in the state of Utah is less than 1%. Usually about .8%, .9% on a yearly basis. The positivity rate that we identified in the facility was .29% for the facility alone. Now that is testing 304 females and 751 males, so it's about 1,055. In the state, we, on our program alone, tested over 6,000 individuals, and we don't see that high. So the, I just want to bring up the fact that we were able to identify with the program three individuals that were tested positive for HIV. One of those clients was immediately linked to care. Another client had left the facility and moved to two different states. And his information was passed to the local jurisdictions that he traveled to, so he could possibly be linked to care. And then one more client was court ordered, and because he had been previously identified, that's what we discovered. When it comes to hepatitis C testing, for hepatitis C, we tested over 1,000 individuals. And in the case of hepatitis, viral hepatitis, I want you to know that the resources are very limited nationwide and very limited in the state. We have developed a resource handbook to help individuals that are identified preliminary positive for viral hepatitis to reach some services where they can actually get confirmed with hepatitis C. And if so, then they can actually get treating, treatment for hepatitis C. Now you are familiar with the case that we had recently in the vicinity. And we were, we tested over 2,000 individuals and we only identified 35, 15 of which were related to the case involved. Now, in the facility, we tested 1,000 individuals. Less than half of them were tested at the hospital. And we identified 127 individuals preliminary positive for hepatitis C. Now this is within a facility, within a period of time of 10 months. Just want to bring up the, the significance of this particular collaboration. We provided 127 personalized confidential counseling sessions for these individuals and provided appropriate resources for them to get the confirmatory information that they needed to proceed for treatment. For sexually transmitted diseases, 567 men and 244 women were tested, from which we had 41 males being positive, 31 for chlamydia, and 10 for gonorrhea. For females, we had 38 positives, 24 for chlamydia, and 14 for gonorrhea. And I just want you to know that in the state, chlamydia rates, we follow the national statistics. And so in terms of incidents at the facility, we are about the same as we were in the, in the, in the state, although it's a little bit higher. But still the statewide, we are following the nation. Gonorrhea, however, gonorrhea, the state is a little bit higher than the state, than the national averages. And at the facility, we were able to identify 24 individuals with gonorrhea. Now for STD testing, they were referred immediately to the local health department. And those individuals received treatment for their infection. Now, what we have here is a project that lasted only 10, 10 months with the Weber County facility. It was a three-year project statewide. And we tested over 9,000 individuals in the state. But we wanted to bring the information directly about our collaboration with the Weber County Correctional Facility. Now this information obviously has dollars attached to it. And the dollar amount that we received from the CDC was not significant, but was significant enough to make a difference in different locations. And this correctional facility was one of them. We were able to identify quite a few positive individuals to different diseases. And we were able to link them to care or provide treatment. Which in public health, it does a lot, when special, because we averted infections and we save dollars when it comes to that. When it comes to funding, we did two analyses, and I want you to know, because this particular project was innovative, there was not necessarily a right tool to look for cost benefit, to do a good cost benefit analysis and to do a return on investment. And when it comes to, to those two tools, we requested CDC for assistance. And we developed new tools in collaboration with a university back east. And with the C expertise, we were able to determine at least some of the information that we needed. From the perspective of the health department, I want you to know that our cost for those 10 months was $81,000. We spent $57,000 in supplies, $17,000 in administrative time that was used, and $6,000 that was support services from our staff in the facility. Now this is only looking one way. We do not have access and we did not ask for information about the personal costs in the facility. But nonetheless, this is where our effectiveness comes. From the $81,000 that we use, we can safely say that we saved, in total, medical costs saved and indirect costs saved, a total of $269,000 worth of services to public health. Significant. Nationally, the average cost savings or return on investment for an HIV case found is about $2 per dollar invested. And in, in terms of medical costs, we provided quite a bit of benefits for treating infections, existing infections, and provided savings over $200,000 of cost saves for cases prevented, for those cases HIV, STD, and viral hepatitis. This particular project has reached the CDC and nationally into different locations through national conferences and through reports that we have provided. So bottom line, the findings show considerable gains from investments in the comprehensive testing program such as this. And while our analysis, like I've said, is conservative and limited, preliminary cost effectiveness shows promising for averting new infections and decreasing costs to public health, which in this case, we created and were able to link the correctional facility with your local health department to reduce the cost to continue the project. We were so successful that Dr. Kay wanted the program to continue. But without funding from the CDC, we were not able to do. So local health department is using now the correctional facility as a testing site for HIV, viral hepatitis, and STD when possible. And through them, we are able to still collaborate and provide this service that was proven to be effective, not only for public health reasons, but economically for the county as well. It's a best practice that has been addressed nationally. It's gonna be in a report to CDC. And right now, the Virgin Islands and other locations in the, nationally have requested information about how this came about. Couple other county jurisdictional jails are requesting information about following this model in order for us to be able to, again, reduce costs and increase effectiveness in the state. So that's what I have today, and I wanted to share with you. And I just want to say, I applaud the local health department, Weber County, Weber Morgan County Health Department, and the Weber County Correctional Facility under Dr. Kay, for the efforts that they're doing. Without them, we couldn't advance prevention efforts in our state. And because of them, we are able to work more and bring more awareness to something that we cannot stop because this is behaviorally transmitted. So thank you for your attention, and if you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions about STDs and sexually transmitted diseases at all. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for presentation, and thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate the coordination, and I think this is another example of our health department, our correctional facilities, and all of those partners working together to accomplish something that I think, in the end, every, every now and then, we miss opportunities to catch things when we, when we can still really make a difference. And we pay a high cost for that down the road. And so we appreciate you seeing this at the very beginning and working so hard. Thank you, Doctor, appreciate all that you do as well. Okay, let's move to our consent items. Consent items number, item number one, request for approval of purchase order in the amount of $839,956.99. Request for approval of warrants number 400081 through 400154 in the amount of $454,246.63. Request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on January 12, 2015. Request for the approval to set the date of February 2, 2016 at 10:00 a.m. for a public hearing to consider and take action. On a request to vacate public utility easement in Rolling Hill, a dedicated private street and public utility easement located along the Southern Mill subdivision boundary line, adjacent to lot number 107 in Summit Eden Phase 1D subdivision. Request for approval of renewal of a standard cooperating agreement by and between Weber County and the Utah State University Extension Service for extension work in 2016. Request from the Weber County Tax Review Committee for an approval of refund of property tax based on a county error in the calculation of square footage on parcel number 200760002. And finally, request from the Weber County Tax Review Committee for approval of refund of interest based on improper notice by the county for lot number 617 Evergreen Mobile Home Park. Mouthful of consent items, Commissioners, any questions before we go to Ricky? Ricky?
Okay, for the 80 purchase orders that were issued for $840,000, 61% of the dollar amount, or $509,000, was for the library, and that was for books, materials, and supplies. 9% or $74,000 was for the garage, and that was primarily supplies as well. 7% or $55,000 went for roads, and that was almost exclusively road salt. 5% or $45,000 was for the recorder, and that was software licenses for their AutoCAD system. For checks, we issued 73 checks for $454,000. 78% of that, or $355,000, was for the transfer station, that was disposal costs. 6% or $27,000 was for the strike force, and that went to building maintenance and transportation. That's all we had for the week of the 12th.
Okay, any questions on any of those, Commissioners?
I'm good with them all. I'll make them, oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Bell.
Make a motion, we accept consent items as read.
Second.
Motion second to adopt the consent items. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Be opposed? They're adopted, thank you. Alright, our first action item, discussion and our action on appointing Chair and Vice Chair to the County Commission. This is something that we usually have on our agenda towards the first of every year. It's, by statute, we're not required to make a motion every year, or to do anything of the sort. We could, we could do it every month, every week if we, if we wanted. So this is an action, this is an item that can be discussed if you so desire. We have a couple of different options. We can take no action, which would allow us to take action, of course, at any time. Even if we do take action, we can adjust that action at any time, so. Commissioners, what's your pleasure on this? How do you want to proceed?
I think we should have straws in the back, and whoever draws the long one comes out here as Chair of the meeting.
Yes, let's preset those straws up. I say we just leave it the way we're going right now.
As I review the year, we've had a lot of, I think, successes in addressing transparency and a new website. Reorganized the county, worked diligently on economic development, or building libraries. So, you know, I think we got a lot of good things going on. We have a lot of those projects that are still probably in the process of either being implemented or halfway through. And so I agree with Commissioner Bell, I think we should, it's good to bring it up and talk about it. We're going in a very strong direction, so I'm happy to just continue on.
Absolutely, sounds good.
And I'll just, let me just add a statement to that then, and that is that the beautiful thing about this is, Commissioners, is that I believe that any of you, of the three of us could, this is really not that tough of a job, but even if it was, I mean, any of the three of you would, or three of us, I think, can handle this, do a wonderful job, and I, I don't think we could go wrong one way or another on this.
Well, I'd hate our meetings to be cut in half. It would be a problem, so let's keep them as long as possible.
Every now and then, I'm still gonna be able to give the thought of the day.
That's true.
And it might be a long one, you just never know. Okay, I appreciate your, your opinions there, and we'll just move on unless there's another, any further discussion. We could, okay, sounds good. Moving to our next item, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and HPN Books for a cityscape book on Weber County. Brooke?
Hello, thank you.
This book's been a long time coming, hasn't it?
You know, it's been a little bit, but yeah, we're working on it, so. Yeah, like you said, I'm presenting a contract with HPN Books for the publication of a hardcover pictorial cityscape book on Weber County. Weber County was approached with the opportunity to participate in the creation of this book that will showcase Weber County photography, editorial, and business profile pages. Weber County is agreeing to collaborate with the publisher on the selection of the photographer, writer, the title, and the content that will be in the book. And, you know, we've, we've been able to see a few examples that this publisher's created already within the state. They've done a book for Salt Lake and a book for Utah County, and they're beautiful books. Davis County's just right at the end of having their book finished up too. So there is any cost associated to the county with this project, and we will be able to have the final review before it's... have the final review, um, before it's published. I have Bart Barica here, um, that's with the publisher. If you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I don't have any questions. I've sat and visited with him a couple of times and looked it over. It looks like a great project. It's, uh, the books they've done have been neat, so I think it's a great, great project starting forward on.
Well, he came all the way from Park City. Sure you don't have anything you want to tell us?
Well, I was, I just, uh...
If you do, come to the microphone stage here for the record.
No, I was just, I was just thinking that if you asked me the question of why the county would do the book...
Why would the county do the book?
Because a public service, uh, would, it would make for an appropriate service to the public to have a beautiful book like this. The Public Trust would be instilled, uh, putting together something like this with, uh, your stakeholders. Customer service would be enhanced, both internal customers, external customers, whether that be a printing company, or in the case, uh, of the artists. Financial stability, because there is no cost to the, to the county. And further, uh, there will be an ebook, so it fits into the continuous improvement with, uh, uh, the technology that the, uh, and security, I love, security, I don't think would really, uh, be, be impacted by the book. And further, you, you spend a considerable amount of money, um, on libraries, so books are important, and this would enhance that.
Looks like he's hit every single one.
You hit it just right, and you just need to state your name.
Uh, Bart Barica.
Thank you. Staff was appreciative of that. Sounds good.
Okay, well, we're looking forward to seeing the final result.
I'm looking forward to putting it together. Thank you.
Great.
I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, a contract binding between Weber County and HPN Books for a cityscape book on Weber County.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second then to approve this contract as stated. Discussion to the motion. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It passes. Item number three, request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and the Broken Heart Rodeo for Internet, Intermountain Icebreaker High School Invitational Rodeo to be held at the Golden Spike on March third through the fifth, twenty sixteen. Uh, somehow you've moved up from last to second to last, now to third to last, Mr. Harvey.
I'm making progress.
You are?
Yes, sir.
You, you want to, let's just stay on a roll, huh?
Okay. That's a good idea. Commissioners, I'd, uh, this is a, a contract that, uh, we're actually hiring a stock contractor. Weber County is hiring a stock contractor to produce what's turning into be one of the larger, if not, well, one of the larger high school rodeos in the region, uh, including state high school rodeos. I'm proud to say that our little staff out there at the Golden Spike put this, uh, idea together about five years ago, and four years ago, we held the first rodeo of this type. It's, uh, one that we've grown ourselves. It brings in now, uh, from last year, we had participants from two provinces in Canada and about thirteen different states. It's a great economic impact to the county. The stock contractor provides all of the rodeo services to Weber County, including, uh, uh, solicitation of entries for these kids all over, uh, and, and with social media, and kids now, uh, from ages twelve all the way up to eighteen. It's just blown up in, with how they do it. Um, he, he provides all that, and he also retains the revenue collected from those entries. Weber County donates the use of the buildings, but also they receive the credit for the stalls. And so, when it's all said and done, this becomes a, also now, it's a profit center for Weber County. It's a good little moneymaker for us as well, and we also receive the revenues generated from the sale of food and concessions. And so, what was initially set out to be a economic impact contributor to Weber County is now that, and also a moneymaker for us. And so, we're really proud of this event. This is a great event, so we're looking for approval. It, uh, it's a little off the chart from our, our normal, uh, fee ordinance, so we're looking for approval of this contract.
Okay.
Another, excuse me, another great news story for our local newspaper.
I'll make a motion, we accept contract between Weber County and Broken Heart Rodeo for the Intermountain Icebreaker High School Invitational Rodeo.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion in the motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Mrs. Ebert, if you'll come up to the microphone. Next is our request for approval of reimbursement of agreements binding between Weber County and the following individuals for basic training, Carson Morby and Jessica Bickel. Good to see you.
Good morning.
I'm going to be up here smiling, so I look like I'm supportive.
Thank you. Uh, the sheriff's office has hired two more individuals to attend Weber State's, uh, Corrections Academy that begins next Monday, the twenty-fifth. And so, we have two separate reimbursement agreements, uh, with these individuals, that if they, uh, seek employment or leave within two years, that they will be obligated to pay us back the costs of the training that we expended for them to attend the academy. So, I am just here to ask for your approval for these agreements.
I think it's a great recruiting tool, and there is a significant, uh, amount of investment in training officers and re, retention of officers, so I think it's very positive, and I support it, and I hope we continue it.
I'll make a motion that we accept the reimbursement agreements for the two individuals listed for basic training.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second then to approve this, these two, uh, agreements for these two individuals. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? It passes. And item number, thank you, Mrs. Ebert, item number five, Sean, if you'll work your way up here, request for approval to grant an easement for public, for emergency access over county property.
Thank you, commissioners. Back in two thousand and eight, the county had granted an easement, uh, through a county parking lot at the animal shelter at the fairgrounds, uh, for a development that was taking place on the western boundary of that parking lot. That development never came to fruition, but a, a new company has purchased that property and is proceeding with the development, and they have asked the county just to relocate the easement that was granted back in two thousand and eight. Uh, it's, it's really just a matter of, of feet between the two easements, but the new road design, uh, for the new development lines up better with this new location, and that is why, uh, the easement is being requested for this movement.
Makes more sense for us as well?
It, it doesn't, it doesn't affect us. Uh, we have parking stalls along that western boundary, but it would affect parking stalls either way. This is a, just for emergency access, so in the case of, of a fire or something where, uh, the main entrance to the, uh, new development was blocked, this would be a, a place where fire trucks or ambulances could come through. Uh, as part of this agreement, the previous agreement required the developer to plow the county's parking lot. That, that's something that we could discuss, but it, it appears that that might be a little bit of a problem, uh, just timing-wise and requiring someone to continually plow our parking lot when the easement may never be used. Uh, so that was in the previous agreement. The developer has asked that it not be included in this agreement, but that the responsibility to maintain the area that would have to be accessed for the easement, they would have to maintain that part in case, uh, that would, it ever had to be used. The agreement is for a term of fifty years, and, uh, all the other provisions are the same, although the new agreement would then vacate the agreement that was signed in two thousand and eight. So, that is the information that I have to present to you today.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is that we would proceed forward, uh, with moving the easement, and, uh, that we would require the developer to put in a fence, maintain, or a, a gate, maintain that gate, and plow the area that would be needed for access, but not to, to plow the entire parking lot that the county has. I think that's a little bit excessive for this type of an easement.
And that's the way that the, the agreement is written?
That's the way that, that the new agreement is written.
And so, you're comfortable with the wording and the language as presented?
I am, yes.
This, is this an open, um, easement, or is it gated or anything like that?
The easement will be gated, yes.
One question I have.
There will be a road built on the developer's property with a gate at the county's property.
And they, they currently don't plow our parking lot now, do they?
No, and, and that's...
Exactly. I mean, they're not doing it now anyway, and it's our parking lot to maintain. If they're plowing it, they can come whenever they want. We have public that comes there, we plow it now anyway.
Correct.
I think this makes perfect sense, and it's just kind of updating it, so I think it sounds great. I think it's good.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, and grant easement for emergency access over county property.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Sean, appreciate it. Okay, to our public comment, is there anyone here from the public who would like to comment today? Oh, okay. Then Mr. Diamond back there was looking like he was making a move for the pul, for the podium, so...
For the door.
Yeah, for the door. All right, any other public who would like to comment today? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We'll assign the, uh, pledge of allegiance for the meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. The volunteers that might be here, Brooke, we'll put you down. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And, uh, before, um, before we leave, I just have to say one thing that I, that Commissioner Ebert had mentioned earlier, um, and I just wanted to say thank you. As I look at, back on this past year, um, it has been an extremely productive one. Um, I am just grateful to have, um, commissioners with me who are literally wearing themselves out in the public business, and, uh, just don't wear yourselves out too fast, okay? You're, I, I just wanted you both to know how much I appreciate working with you and, uh, look forward to it in the future, so.
I second it.
Commissioners, I was just going to say that we used to say, take, stay tuned at the beginning of the year. Well, we're back at it. There's going to be a lot of stuff rolling out in the next couple of months, so stay tuned, and I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
And I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.